Contracted in front of you. In layman's terms, it says like this. If District X is a non-high district and District Y, the high district builds a building, that there is some part form of reciprocal money that it changes hands to help support that new building. That's pretty much what it says in layman's terms. How you determine that, there's many different methodical ways that people have talked about recently. It's the number of students come divided by how the building was, how much it was built for, the number divided by the number of students attending, all of that. In the end, this, we're in a position that we need to improve our track. We have some work we'd like to do on a tennis court. And they are so happy that their students are able to come and participate in our beautiful school and our setting that we're offering to them. Let's come up with an agreement. There was an previous agreement about two years ago that had an X, a figure on it. That was discussed, then a, an other figure was discussed and it kind of went back and forth. And so Mr. West and I, we kind of negotiated a little bit. We discussed in the $650,000 range and then it was 450 and then it was five, you know what I mean? Kind of like typical negotiations. And what we decided was, how are they going to pay for it? This was a big piece of it. And the decision was that they are going to pay in a one-month sum because that's beneficial to us. And then it was, discussion was, we're going to sign an agreement today. How long is it going to take to get the money, the cost of the interest? If we use that money, if we borrow against that, that contract. I believe Ms. Hill, our business manager, explained about some options we had last time of what we could do to borrow against that contract and so on and so forth. When we went back again, Mr. West and I discussed that we could do a, a number and then plus interest. Then both of our attorneys helped us and says, oh, that's not a good thing to do. Interest is a fluctuating item. If there's a bond or a levy passes, doesn't pass in time. So we agreed on a round number that included more than the amount of interest that would occur in one year. What you'll see in front of you is a $525,000 agreement that its intent is one year long. And whether they've choose to pay that in three months, one month, or within one year, it's the same $525,000 to the Prosser School. That's kind of it in a nutshell. Happy to answer questions, but that's kind of it in a nutshell.
Well, I told, I, Jason and I had discussed this. I wish it were more money, but I will be happy to put it to bed. This has gone on for way too long. It was due a long time ago and should have been paid.
Thank you.
Is my opinion.
Thank you so much.
You got me.
I'm, I think this is what I'm pleased about. You have two young superintendents doing what they think is best for school districts, that we are going to be able to do our track, that we're going to be able to investigate and possibly start our tennis courts, that we're going to do what's best for the community of Prosser. I can't speak for what has happened in the past and emotions and all of those things that happen. So I'm very pleased that two superintendents, he's a year longer than me, but two new superintendents were able to rectify something between two districts and be able to shake hands and smile and build this relationship again. And I think that's what's super important for the relationship between Patterson and Prosser. It's hundreds of years of relationship and it needs to go back to being a partnership and remove as much adversarial conversations as possible. So that's how I would explain my success.
Make a motion to approve the non-high capital contribution.
I would have seconded that.
It's been moved in second to approve the Patterson non-high cap, non-high capital contribution agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. I really do appreciate it.
I, I want to say, I, I am pleased that we are moving forward. And I think that this will be a huge step. It's a huge step in the right direction and the money is going to benefit both districts.
That's what the RCW was originally written for.
Yeah.
So I'm going to graciously explain my next steps. I'm, I'm super excited to be able to eventually apply for the permanent superintendent position. And as such, I'm going to step away from my position at the table tonight. And you're going to be discussing the plan in the future. That's public record, but I want everyone to be aware that I'm not sitting on this side of the table as we're discussing that, as I am an equal candidate to anyone else who's applying. So I'm going to excuse myself this evening and if you have anything else, you know how to find me.
Thank you, Kim. I appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
Oh, thank you. Hello to my crew out there. I don't know who's all there. Steve, Hank, I don't know who's all there, but hello and goodbye.
There he is. So the next item. Have a good night.
Uh huh. Thank you very much.
Is the discussion with Steve Webb with HDE on the permanent superintendent search. With that, I'll let you, let you take over, Steve. Good to see you.
Well, thank you, Jason. It's good to see the Prosser School Board. Kim, thank you for a gracious introduction and excusing yourself from this part of, of the process. Our purpose tonight is to really orient the board on the proposed 23, 24 superintendent search timeline and activities. I know you have had a copy of that in advance along with a memo from Hank and I that walks through the very extensive timeline and activities. Respond to any questions that the board may have and finalize any of the dates and recommended activities. As the board is aware, the final timeline will then be agendas for board action at your next regular business meeting on August 9th. And then Hank and I, once the board acts on that final agenda, final timeline and activities, Hank and I will get to work executing that search as outlined. A few important timeline parameters. The search is proposed to conclude with the board appointing and acting on the sole finalist contract on January 17th, 2024 at a special board meeting. As previously discussed, this will be well ahead of most Washington superintendent searches conducted in 23, 24. You should be well positioned to draw a, a very strong competitive pool of applicants. The second parameter, consistent with a direction from Board President Jason, the timeline is also structured in a manner that would allow newly elected board directors to participate in the selection phase of the process, assuming they're sworn in no letter, no later than December 13th, 2023. I want to transition quickly to just talk briefly about recommended community and stakeholder engagement strategies. The board expressed during the interim expedited search, strong interest ensuring community and stakeholder engagement as part of the permanent superintendent search process. Human Capital Enterprises is recommending the following engagement strategies. And I just want to talk about these at a high level. And then once we get into the walking through the timeline itself and the activities, we can dig a little bit more deeply if the board has questions. Those three engagement strategies include first, 15 stakeholder focus group conversations with no more than eight participants in each of those stakeholder focus groups. We organize those by affinity. So typically we recommend the following focus groups. Student focus group, parent focus groups typically two to three, Spanish speaking family focus group, community leaders, representatives, focus group, certificated staff, two to three focus groups, classified staff, two to three focus groups, building administrator focus group, central office administrator focus group, the central office support staff focus group, and then a union leader's focus group. Those are our recommended focus groups. Certainly, if the board has interest in engaging other affinity focus groups, we could certainly include that once we develop that part of the process. In total, through these focus groups, we would engage approximately 120 diverse stakeholders with very different points of view and perspectives about what's needed in the next superintendent for Prosser School District and some of the context and conditions that next superintendent will face as they transition into that leadership role. The second engagement strategy is a community-wide online survey. Human Capital Enterprises typically receive strong stakeholder participation in these surveys. Folks have a lot of vested interest in the outcome and certainly want to provide some input relative to the desired leadership skills, experiences, qualities, attributes in the next superintendent. Respondents typically include high school students, parents, district employees, community leaders and citizens. Human Capital Enterprises publish those surveys in two languages, English and Spanish. Certainly, we can provide an additional language if the Prosser Board has interest in doing so. There's a slight fee in getting the survey translated. If we translate that, it's a little bit more expensive than if the district has internal staff. But I suspect that English and Spanish will likely suffice in terms of the predominant languages spoken in the Prosser community. And then finally, we're recommending one or two confidential community stakeholder interview panel for finalist candidates in lieu of open community forums that would disclose the identities of the finalists. As this board is aware, our strong recommendation is to conduct a confidential search and expand stakeholder engagement through these confidential interview panels, either one or two. Panels consist typically of 12 to 15 stakeholder representatives. They're randomly selected by representation group, students, district employees, parents, community, union leadership, from parties expressing interest in participating. Participants are asked to sign a non-disclosure agreement as a condition of participating in these confidential interview panels. And in our experience, and to our knowledge, we've never had a breach of confidentiality. Additionally, we strongly recommend maintaining a confidential search for several reasons. First, given that the interim superintendent will be an applicant, it will be even more of a challenge to recruit sitting superintendents. And as we've shared previously, confidential searches have less risk exposure for sitting superintendents with their current board and their community. And then secondly, and equally important, is the quality of the feedback the board receives from these structured interviews from participants. It's significantly better informed. Panelists have a chance to engage and interact with finalists in a more rigorous process than a simple meet and greet. The board receives detailed written feedback from each panelist on a candidate to consider. Panelists do not rank choice, nor do panels recommend who the board should hire. As we've stated previously, this is the board's decision alone. And we're pretty explicit about this with the panels. Panelists do provide feedback on the merits of each finalist's interview, paperwork, anything else they wish the board to consider. The board would receive that panel feedback the evening prior to interviewing the finalists, which can shape how the board may choose to conduct their interviews with the finalists and the kinds of conversations they may engage with those applicants. The cost for these panels is $2,100 each, as previously outlined in the professional services agreement. So those are our three recommended stakeholder community engagement strategies. And before we transition to just a high-level timeline overview, walk through the activities with more detail and the dates, I want to pause there for just a moment and respond to any questions that the board may have relative to the two guiding parameters, the January 17th date and the December 13th date for newly elected board directors to participate in the selection phase of the process. And then respond to any questions or suggestions that the board may have relative to community and stakeholder engagement. So let's start with the first, are there questions around those two timeline date parameters, the January 17th date or the December 13th date?
Questions?
Or comments?
No, I think we're good.
It sounds fine.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or suggestions, comments relative to the community and stakeholder engagement strategies that we're recommending?
I think that sounds good.
No, I think we're good.
Well, thank you. All right, if we could, Selena, pull up the timeline itself, the one pager, please. And I know the board has this, this is really for participants that may be in the room or audience participants online. If we could just expand that a little bit for better viewing. Please.
We have to make it a little bigger.
Yeah. If you go to the top with a plus, there you go. Thank you. That's good. I will need direction from the board on whether one stakeholder panel is sufficient or if the board has interest in conducting two stakeholder interview panels.
Could you talk about how you, you run your stakeholder panels?
Yeah, if we have one stakeholder panel, we typically have for each of the panels that we're operating 12 to 15 representatives from those specific stakeholder groups that express interest. Those interview panel meetings typically begin mid-morning. There's a brief orientation and overview that Human Capital Enterprises provides. There is the application materials that are provided in paper copy typically for the, the panel representatives to review in advance. That would include typically their letter of interest, letters of recommendation, and their resume. And there's an opportunity for the panelists to review that information. We provide some general guidelines in terms of the interview process itself, questions that cannot be asked, that are not permissive in that context, much like we did with the board for the expedited search. And then we provide structured interview questions and assigned responsibilities for conducting the interview. And typically those interviews last approximately an hour, much like we did with finalist interviews with the board. Each of the finalist is provided approximately 10 to 15 minutes at the very end to engage the interview panel in a conversation of their choosing. And as, as we always do, we inform the finalists well in advance that that's coming and for them to be thinking about how they'd like to use their time. When that concludes, the interview concludes, then we go through a debrief process that focuses specifically on the interview or any information that they have reviewed in the hard copy in advance of the interview of the applicant's application materials. Then we go through the debrief, much in a very similar process that we did with the board in executive session. We engage in warm and cool feedback. All of that information is captured in a Word document by Human Capital Enterprises consultants. That's part of the information that the board receives that evening. And then each panel, panelist is invited to complete a individual survey that provides confidential feedback to the board. That could be feedback that is relative to the interview, relevant, relative to the paperwork. Or in some cases, some of the panelists may have experiences with the finalist somewhere along their journey and their professional career. And oftentimes, they might want to share some of that information with the board to consider. The board will receive confidential links to that survey information by the panel well in advance that evening of our time subsequently conducting in-person interviews with the finalists. If we have more than one panel, we stage those typically in separate locations. And those panels are conducted, those panel interviews are conducted at the same time with both finalists. And then we flip with some time in between because we've got some travel time depending upon the locations. And then we have some just comfort time for the finalists to sort of gather themselves, take a break, get a cup of coffee, et cetera. But it's incumbent upon Human Capital Enterprises to pull all of that information together well in advance and ship that out to the board so that the board has time to review that that evening. And then we structure our time in the finalist interviews on the next day or the next two days, depending upon the number of finalists that are being interviewed by the board. So that you have enough time in advance of meeting with the finalists to think a little bit, to reflect on the feedback, and then to strategize how you want to use that time in a less structured conversation with the finalists. Elisa, did you have any follow-ups?
No, that's perfect. Thank you.
Okay. So let's go back to the top real quickly and I just want to orient the, where we're at. Of course, this is the planning meeting in open study session. I've already informed the board that if there are any modifications to these activities and/or a proposed dates, the timeline themselves, Human Capital Enterprises will revise the document and then get that to Selena in, in time for preparation for the board packet for your August 9th regular board meeting. Once the board acts on that, the first process is for Human Capital Enterprises to engage in one-on-one board conversations. We would schedule those, hopefully the week of August 14th through 18th. I blocked out my entire week. These are typically 45-minute conversations. Sometimes they run a little shorter. Sometimes they run a little longer. But, but again, we, we typically ask three questions. You know, the first question really focuses on leadership experiences, attributes, qualities, skills that, that, that the individual board director is looking for in the permanent superintendent. The second question then focuses specifically on what kind of challenges, opportunities, strengths of the district will be present when that permanent superintendent transitions in, into the role. And then the third question is really, you know, sort of an open-ended question. Like, is there anything else that we would need to know as we begin to contemplate aligning the ideal profile, the context and conditions, and unique opportunities as we begin engaging in the recruitment work that we need to do in order to ensure that we have a, a, a deep, strong pool of applicants for the board to consider. And I would work through Selena to schedule those, those conversations would be via Zoom. And again, that would be scheduled August 14th through the 18th. So a lot of flexibility there. It could be in the evening, it could be in the morning, you know, pretty wide open. Any questions about board conversations, the one-on-one board conversations? Does anyone have a time conflict? Or they're, they're, they're unavailable that week?
Thursday afternoon for Anthony.
Okay. But you have, Anthony, you have other dates, other days during that week. Okay. Super. Well, it sounds like we'll have a lot of flexibility then to accommodate whatever works in your schedule. We'll then transition in early September after school gets underway to, to identify and engage in those focus group meetings. I'll be doing work in the last week of August to sort of organize and coordinate working through Selena and staff. And then those meetings will be scheduled for that eight or nine-day window. And those are all done remotely. They typically last 45 minutes. We ask very similar questions that we do with, to the focus groups that we do in our one-on-one board conversations. All of that information is compiled in notes. And then we review those notes and it helps inform, of course, the ideal profile, which then subsequently becomes the superintendent qualifications and criteria. And also helps inform the executive summary of the district's strengths and challenges. And again, that helps us as we begin engaging in conversations with prospects. Because they want to have a sense of what's working well in Prosser and where are there some immediate challenges and opportunities. Those meetings, again, typically 40 minutes. If we're doing 15, we should have lots of flexibility. Sometimes we schedule those in the evenings, particularly for parents. And occasionally, sometimes for, for students because students may have very full academic schedules. And occasionally, sometimes for students because students may have very full academic schedules and. Oftentimes, we have some districts who say, you know, it'd be easier for us to convene a student focus group. If we schedule it in, you know, early afternoon or early. Questions about the focus group meetings?
I have one question, Steve, this Jason. When it comes to these focus groups. Probably particularly looking more at, well, I guess in general, how do you come up with the eight people? Or so to to fill these focus groups?
We work with district staff to identify those participants. Oftentimes, some districts will do, you know, an all-call if you're interested in participating in a focus group. And you're a certificated staff member, please let us know. And that information can be collected through a Google form. And then if there are more than. If you're doing three certificated focus groups, if there are more than 24 individuals who have expressed interest. You want to obviously make sure that you have elementary K-5 interest, you know, K-5 representation. Six-eight representation, nine-twelve representation. So you might have to do a little bit of recruiting too. But if you have more than 24, you know, then we recommend that. Point of contact that's working on that part of the project, which is the heaviest lift really for. You know, district staff is to really identify and coordinate the logistics in terms of communicating. With a focus group participants. But we invite a random sort of selection process. Sometimes most districts will say, all right, we've got 24 participants. We have like K-5, six-eight, nine-twelve. And we'll invite participants from the elementary. Invite participants from the middle school level, from the high school level. And then select randomly eight representatives. So there are different ways to ensure that you have cross-sector representation. And and we provide some direction with our district point of contact that's working on this part of the process. To really structure that in a way that meets the integrity of the process.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions on focus groups?
Nope.
The online survey window is timed right around the launch of the school year. Or we're recommending leaving this open just a bit longer. Typically, we recommend a two-and-a-half to three-week window. Some of that is a function of, you know, survey overload. When the individuals receive the survey, they typically respond immediately or they don't respond at all. So we're recommending extending the survey window. And we'll work with district staff to provide a follow-up reminder at that point. As I indicated in my opening remarks, we have pretty strong participation. And again, the questions that are posed here are similar to the one-on-one board conversation questions. Similar to the focus group questions. And of course, what we're attempting to do is triangulate the kind of input that we receive. And as a broad of representation across all different stakeholder groups within a community. In order to inform the ideal profile and the executive summary of the district's strengths and challenges. Questions about the online survey? That survey is published in two languages, English and Spanish. We can publish it in any additional language if that's the interest of the board, as I indicated earlier. There's a small translation fee. Last year, when I was working the Bellevue School District Superintendent search. They have in Bellevue, a large Chinese population. So we translated the survey into Mandarin Chinese as a third option. But I suspect English and Spanish will suffice for the crosser community at large.
Sounds good.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Between September 29th and October 4th, that's a tight turnaround. When that online survey window closes. We will present in in person in an open study session, a draft ideal profile. And next, Prosser Superintendent Qualifications and Criteria. As I mentioned, we use all of the input from the one-on-one board conversations. All of the input from the focus group conversations. All of the input from the online survey window to draft the ideal profile next process. Superintendent Qualifications and Criteria. Some of that work will be shaped earlier, will inform that. Once the survey will finalize the draft, once the online survey window closes. And we'll present that to the board. This is, of course, the board's document. And there may be missing pieces that the board feels strongly about. In terms of superintendent qualifications or criteria that you're desiring in your next superintendent. And it's important that if that's the case, or there's some language that needs to be revised. That we do that in that open study session. Refine it, revise it, and then finalize it for board action at your next regular board meeting. Once the board acts on those superintendent, that final document, the Superintendent Qualifications and Criteria document. Then we get to work in. In a strong way in all of our recruitment efforts. They become our marching orders in terms of our outreach. So we'll have an opportunity to review it, to review it, to revise and refine. Before the board is asked to act on it on October 11th. We'll also present at that October 4th study session, the executive summary. Just briefly highlighting it. We won't go into detail and we won't wordsmith that particular document. Hank and I present that as our professional judgment, given everything that we've heard. That we believe it's important for the board to consider and for the community to consider. And for candidates to know about the district's strengths. And the challenges that the superintendent's successor will face in the future. That document gets published to our website, Human Capital Enterprises' website. And it'll also get published to the Prosser School District Superintendent Search landing page. Questions about the ideal profile, next Prosser Superintendent Qualifications and Criteria document and process?
Nope, sounds good.
Okay. Our recruitment period is scheduled for just over four weeks. We've will transition, of course, into the Thanksgiving holiday. Once the recruitment period closes on November 22nd. I think the board knows that previously, you know, we engage in conversations with potential prospects. Along the way as part of our early exploratory conversation. When we begin thinking about the conversations that we're having with the board, the focus groups, the online survey, etc. So we launch, even though the recruitment period is scheduled for October 15th through November 22nd. Hank and I are engaged in conversations with potential prospects that we think might be a good fit and match. Once we have a pretty clear sense of kind of the direction that we're hearing. Given the conversations that emerge in August and September.
Sounds good.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was just saying that sounds, sounds good.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Preliminary interviews are scheduled with consultants. December 5th and 6th. Hank and I will typically, depending upon the size of the pool. Interview approximately 12 to 15 of the applicants. Of course, if we have fewer than 12 to 15 applicants, then we'll narrow the scope. But we're looking at those applicants that are more strongly aligned with the ideal profile. With the next Prosser Superintendent Qualifications and Criteria. We do these preliminary interviews, those interviews typically are 30 to 40 minutes in length. During the period between. In advance of the preliminary interviews, we're conducting our one. Background recommendation conversation. And then we pull all of that information together to inform our judgment. About a presentation of slate scheduled for December 13th. Again, those preliminary interviews are with the consultants, typically 12 to 15, 30 to 40 minutes in length. We usually do those over two days, those are very long, full days for us. All of the background checks, the recommendation that we conduct on the first recommendation. Telephone reference check is done well in advance of those interviews. We take all of that information then and much as we did on the expedited search. We present a slate to the board to consider. And typically, those, that slate is structured in a tiering process. Those that we strongly recommend the board to consider, given their alignment with the ideal profile. Very strong recommendation relative to their alignment with next Prosser Superintendent Qualifications and Criteria. The second tiering is a strong recommendation. And then the third tiering is. A tier that is qualified, but maybe lacking. One or two experiences or qualifications, criteria. But do not warrant, given the pool, elevating them in tier one or tier two. That executive session would be in person and that is tentatively scheduled for December 13th. Of course. Much like we did in the expedited search. It's the board's decision on who to advance as a semifinalist. So if we bring out of the 12 to 15. Applicants that we've done preliminary interviews with and we bring. Eight or nine applicants in tier one and tier two. And the board has interest in having a conversation about a tier three applicant being considered as a semifinalist. We'll certainly facilitate that conversation and if it is in fact the board's interest to identify. Someone that was not in the tier one or tier two. Groupings, then that's within the board's purview and will take that direction from the board. So I want to be unequivocally clear, it's our recommendation, but that is your decision as a board. And the board can advance certainly any of the applicants that are part of the pool. And as the board already knows, you'll have access to all of the applicant files. Every applicant that makes application, you'll have access to all of their paperwork. Questions?
Nope.
We're recommending semifinalist interviews. These are first-round interviews in executive session on December 18th and 19th. Typically, we recommend boards interview five to seven semifinalists. Sometimes boards choose to interview fewer than five. Sometimes boards choose to interview more than seven. In that first round. But know that if you choose to interview more than seven, that makes for very full days on December 18th and 19th. But we have facilitated processes where boards have recommended advancing eight. Of the applicants that we present as part of the slate into semifinalist interviews. Those interviews are typically 45 to 50 minutes in length with some. Unstructured time again for the applicant to engage in a conversation with the board. That they structure in advance of coming into that interview. Those interviews are conducted virtually. We would act on candidates confidentially to advance as finalists in open session on December 19th. Very similar process. As the expedited search. No questions?
No, you're doing pretty good at getting it very clear. Thank you.
January, just one thing to note here. December 18th and 19th are two days in advance of what I believe is. The half-day on December 20th on the Prosser School District calendar. So we tried to structure this in a way that, you know, school was still in session. We weren't pushing it into the winter holiday break, but that's just. An FYI, FYI, a piece of information for board. We then would take roughly a two-and-a-half, three-week break because of the holidays. Again, the important dates around December 13th and beyond. Assume that the newly-elected board directors are seated. So the newly-elected board directors would be seated December 13th, we assume. Certainly, if the county can certify elections sooner. It's possible that they might be seated at your last regular board meeting in November. But given some. Exchange with Jason, it just felt like rather than. Structuring a timeline that assumes that those election results can get certified by the county. And pressing and then pivoting from an already-published and communicated schedule of activities connected with the search. It made more sense to really structure it in such a way that would. Ensure that the county had enough time to certify the election and then that the new board director. And then that the new board directors would be sworn in and seated on December 13. I think I shared in the memo in advance. Once we have confidence that that election results will be certified. In the margin. Will engage in conversations with the directors elect. That will include one-on-one conversations with those three director elects. Similar to the one-on-one conversations that. That, that we have with all of the current board members. And will also ensure that they have access. To the confidential link of all of the applicant files in advance of the December 13 meeting. So that they can engage. As best they can, given the transition point in the search process. We'll have that three and a half week, roughly three and a half week break because of the winter holiday. And then that will give us a time to finalize the community stakeholder panels. Whether it's one or two, to engage in early January in the communication with those panel lists. And then schedule the panel interviews on January 9. Those would be in person backed by the finalist interviews on January 10th and 11th. So Hank and I likely will be. In Prosser on January 8. Working with district staff, making sure that the community stakeholder panel logistics are dialed in. For January 9th and finalist interviews with the board. Are dialed in for January 10th and January 11th. We typically recommend that the board advance two to three finalists. Sometimes boards advance. Four. But know that these interviews are less structured than the first round interviews. And are more open-ended, but informed, given. The first round interview that the board had with the candidate. And given the input and feedback from the community stakeholder panels. You'll have some time in advance to plan for those conversations with finalists. And if, if you're doing two, you might be able to do both in one day. Depending upon schedules. If you're doing more than two, we would likely recommend that you structure those over two days. Because those finalist interviews run typically somewhere between an hour and 10 and hour. 15 minutes, and then there's time. Much like we did in the expedited search for an immediate debrief with the board based on that finalist interview. Questions about either the community stakeholder panel a date on January 9th and process? Or the finalist interviews scheduled for the board on January 10th and 11th?
Nope, sounds good.
We'll scaffold well in advance what that might look and sound like, so that you'll have plenty of runway to think about that. And of course, we'll be present to help you think through how to organize and plan. For those less structured conversations with the finalists on January 10. So you'll have plenty of time to prepare and of course, we'll be there to help provide advice and counsel and support if needed. The board would meet to review finalist qualifications in executive session. Either on January 11th or on January 12th. If you're doing the interviews on one day. We always advise boards to, in this full search process. To provide just a little bit of separation between what could be two or three interviews in one day, very long day. And then time to review all of the input that you've received from the community stakeholder panels. And then to reflect on that, to review the ideal profile and express or superintendent qualifications and criteria. So you just have some think time, some reflection time. If you're structuring the interviews over two days, then. We would recommend that you still take that distance, provide a little bit of reflection time. And then come back on January 12th to meet in executive session to review the finalist qualifications. And then to go into open session to act on the sole finalists confidentially. Again, it depends on, you know, the number of. Finalists that you choose to advance and then. Whether or not you want to spend one day doing the interviews or two days doing the interviews. And oftentimes that's a function of how many finalists are being. If you've got two, most boards say, let's try to get it done in one day. And then reconvene the following morning in a special board meeting and executive session. To review finalist qualifications with possible action to follow.
I have one quick question, just now that I'm looking at a calendar that far in advance. We have a regular scheduled meeting for January 10. I don't think we're going to want to have a regular meeting and. An additional meeting just for interviews? I don't remember doing that before, did we? It just seems like a lot of time to not conduct the business of the district and do interviews potentially on the same day.
We could certainly structure, it makes for a long day. If you are interviewing three finalists. We could structure one interview on January 10th, do that. In advance of your regular board meeting, so that you're bundling the time together. And then reconvene on January 11th to do the two finalist interviews. If you're only interviewing two finalists. We could choose to just do those two finalist interviews, Jason, on January 11th. And not bundle anything on January 10th and then still. Review the finalist qualifications in executive session. So I think we have some flexibility to structure this in a way that is manageable. However, if, if the board chooses to advance four finalists. Then it, it potentially could make January 11th. A, a, a longer day with three interviews on January 11th and one interview on January 10th. Or we could look for alternate dates, if that's the board's interest.
What do you guys think? Should we just keep with the current slated days or? I mean, it's a long ways out, I can't plan that ahead, but.
I think for now we can, and we can restructure as needed.
Excuse me, will you be looking at the comments from the Zoom attendees?
Yes, but give us a minute, please.
The, yeah, the appointment contract action much as very similar to what was. Done with the expedited search process. Would occur at a special board meeting scheduled approximately a week later. We're recommending January 17. At that time, the board would announce the appointment and take action on the contract. And as we did previously with the expedited search, the board, a chair. And I would work with district council to negotiate contract terms with the sole finalist. Sometime between January 11th or January 12th. And the date in which the board would need to publish. The contract, which would be 24 hours in advance on January 16. Any other questions from the board? Or suggestions?
No, I think it's good.
Well, thank you, I just want to. You know, reiterate our deep appreciation in partnering. With Prosser Board and Community on the permanent superintendent search process. We take great pride in this work. And look forward to continuing to support the board. And finding the ideal next superintendent. To lead the Prosser School District and to execute on your strategic plan. And to position the Prosser School District for the future.
Okay, thanks, Steve. We did have a couple of questions, I don't, I can't remember exactly what the question was, but.
Question was, why can't we have the superintendent start a couple of weeks early in June? Because staff would be gone and principals would be going and I think Steve can add to this, but. The most common contract structure for a district administrator is July 1st to June 30th. So whomever, if we, if we have a person who is currently working. They are going to be on contract in another district till June 30th. It doesn't mean there's no contact with that person during that time, but they would be under contract in another district until July 1st, when they would be able to come to our district. So that was the first one. And then the other one is just a comment about. January 10th being a month away before the MNO levy. That's what it says. It's not a question, it's a comment.
I would think it's all good things to consider and to think about, and everything's always negotiable.
I, I would add just one more bit of information on the question around the July 1 start date. It is correct that contracts in Washington State typically are structured with a July 1 start date. For superintendents, that is not the case in other states, but it is typical in Washington for those contracts unless. It's an interim contract that a district is acting upon. We will work with the board and with the superintendent successor. To recommend, suggested onboarding transition activities. Which could include community meet and greets, which could include listening sessions well in advance of assuming those responsibilities. It's pretty typical for onboarding activities and transition activities to occur. As quickly as possible and practical in light of where that. Successor is employed and, you know, the flexibility with their own commitments. With their current employment contract. But know that, you know, I've straddled. You know, serving in two systems. Transitioning into superintenances in my career. And it's like having one foot in one place and another foot in another place at the same time. And there are activities and events that can help ease that. A transition and familiarity and, and, and a sense of. Beginning to build a community and team.
Is there any other questions?
I'm good.
Awesome. With that, Steve, I don't, do you have anything else to add or we're good till next week?
I will finalize the document, which is in essence, this document, take the proposed. Off and on the footer, include final with the proposed action date of August 9th. I'll get that to Selena and then Selena will need to coordinate just a bit relative to those one-on-one. Board conversations with the current Prosser Board. For the week of August 14th through the 18th. All right, everyone. It's good to see you remotely and look forward to supporting this work over the course of this next year.
Thank you, Steve, appreciate it.
All right, take care.
Take care. With that, that concludes the agenda items for today, our next regular board meeting, August 9. Right here in the Prosser Library Workroom. At 6:00 PM, if there's nothing else. We'll adjourn.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.